Got her bunk coat, back shit into the house. And then took it off of the dump. She goes, I didn't get that. And then her husband was in Europe on a work trip for a long time. And she's like, I don't know what to do.
How I live right now, yeah, in the eighteen forty seven, I believe. And my father bought it in fifty seven, fifty eight. You couldn't walk in. The trash was, like, just the whole, everything, but the people, they didn't throw anything away. And when he cleaned that out, we had a trail of eight foot high, maybe six feet long, and four, four foot high, pile of leather, old stuff I got. But all that had to do was did move up catalog, one of them were catalogs. There were two beds, you know, there were three or four, the old player pianos and all that. And the bed, some of the beds had really not worn any.
Took an axe and dropped them off.
Well, I can't figure out how they ever got that piano.
You could have kept the house around it.
I think we have.
Listen, have it from town.
How did it get here in the French?
My problem is, all that problem, if it had been taken care of, would have been all over. But in the fifties, nobody gave a pound of money.
Even the catwalks.
Yes, the catwalk.
No, I, we have so many minutes, I just want to make sure I have them.
Well, whatever your money was, it probably just sat there molded, didn't it, on paper?
All right, guys. We are calling the regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday, February fourteenth, the Bethel Planning Board to order. Our chair, Sherry Thurston, cannot be with us tonight, so I will be acting chair. I'll make the opening statement for members of the public who aren't here. But just to remind everybody who wants to address the board to do it through the chair and to remember that we're here to act on applications in accordance with our rules and regulations. And we do not add our opinions or likes to our regulatory hearing. So, our, we do have a quorum, and we have three sets of minutes, which are noted on your agenda, and we need to act on these, so we'll do them in order. The sidewalk of January five, which was associated with Bethel residences, is there a motion to approve these minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the January fifth sidewalk.
And is there a second?
Yeah.
Bob?
I'm gonna make, can we amend that to do them all at one time?
I don't think that's the proper way to do it.
Yeah, I can't vote on this one, because it does.
Because some people are, we're not present.
Oh, okay, go ahead. Yeah, I'll second it anyway.
Okay, thank you. And all in favor?
Yep.
Oh, I can't, because I wasn't there.
So you don't have a?
I still don't have a quorum until Sherry's back there.
Okay, sorry, forgot that I wasn't there for that. All right, we'll put that aside.
So all table until next meeting again?
All of them are gonna be tabled?
No.
Uh, no, just that one.
Site, okay, so then we have the regular meeting of January twenty fourth.
Make a motion that that, we approve regular meeting minutes.
Sorry.
But we need to make an adjustment on, if you just make an adjustment, then Michelle is select board, right? It just says, Michelle is vice chair.
Where is that?
Under called order minutes, held up present.
She was, wouldn't that just be public? She wasn't here in official capacity.
Yeah. She was just here as a, Michelle Cole.
It says public present. She wasn't here to represent this.
Yeah, but it says, it says, Michelle Carol Cole, vice chair.
No, that's me.
Oh.
Okay, sorry, yeah, no, no.
Oh, I misread that then. Okay, scratch that then.
All right, so do we have a motion for the minutes of January twenty fourth?
We already, we already have a motion in the second.
Oh, we have a motion in the second? I call it.
You seconded?
Who seconded?
Bob did.
Okay, all those in favor? And then the last set is the sidewalk minutes of February two, for the project that's before us tonight. Do we have a motion? Bob moves.
I seconded.
Okay, I'm giving it to Peter.
Good.
I have to abstain.
Okay, and Jim is abstaining, all those in favor?
Three of them standing.
Oh, are we, okay, we have four? We have four?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So the only ones we didn't make it through was?
It was those first ones, the nice houses.
Yeah, very good. Okay, I am not aware of any additional communication. We had a letter in our packet, but we'll deal with that when that comes up. I am gonna request, if it's all right with the board, that we take up new business first, so as not to hold up people for a relatively minor issue?
I'll make a motion that we rearrange the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, so.
They have to be out, I know.
Oh, just to be different, huh? Okay, so you have a packet in your folder, where the project's represented by Cassie, and Rick, okay, and you are, you have the floor. To just tell us the overview here.
Okay, the overview is that Rick and I share a property line up on Chapman Hill. I'm the owner of lots two and three, which are up the hill. Rick is the owner of lot one. One, Rick Angeline, built his garage a smidge too far over the lot line, and we just wanna bump that up so that he's got his space and his setbacks, and we're not trying to sell any rent or any, anything there. We just wanna make it right and clean, and that's why we're here.
So you have a?
We have a proposed new survey.
Yes, and I see it here, as everybody found that proposed new survey. And you can see the little bit that needs to be adjusted there. Are there questions from the board?
Pretty straightforward.
Hearing none. Do we have a motion to amend?
You have to do the finding of facts.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Want to do that first?
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, we have to go through this, Dr. So I started thinking this was such a simple thing. Okay.
You do need to do standing then.
Okay, so standing is, we have the warranty deed here. And I think that that is clear. Does anyone have any questions about that? Okay, do we have a motion regarding standing?
I'll make a motion that they, Dick, I was gonna say the client, but you're not the client. Wow. The applicant has standing.
Jim, second. Any questions? If not, all in favor? Okay, and do we have any other completeness?
That's up to the board, if you wanna do that. I mean, I don't think that matters either way.
Okay, well, then we'll skip it. On your advice, so now we can move on to findings of fact, and this is the amended subdivision plan for Chapman Hill subdivision. And we will go through this as we normally do, and we are on page one. Does anyone have any questions about what is written on page one? Or on page two, any questions? Courtney, you'll let us, nothing here has changed from the?
Original, no. The only thing I did was maybe adjust stuff, if like, originally they had an erosion control plan. I said that they didn't need one, but those were the only adjustments that were made.
Okay. Okay, so page two. Page one, set. Page three. Page four. And page four begins that section, it just the, the specifics. It does say currently before planning board for subdivision amendment does not require D E P, so that's the only thing there. We're on to page five. All set. And at page six. All set. And page seven. And the conditions, Courtney, are these the same conditions that?
No, those were the ones that were in the original subdivision.
Thank you for that. So is there a motion to approve the?
No.
The, this subdivision, the findings of fact is amended. We have a sec, Jim seconding. Any further questions or comments? If not, call for code. All those in favor? Okay, now, Cassie, do you have something for us?
I do, I've got the life scales.
Well, we quickly, we can end the, of course, we need a motion to approve the amended subdivision plan.
Amendment to approve the amended subdivision plan.
Sorry.
Did you get that? And all those in favor?
There's two copies also.
So those kids, and you're good today?
I actually signed it blue, and then you know, it's the original.
Can I have a blue pen? Well, you'll have your blue pen.
Cassie, are you bringing your kids out to see the llamas on Saturday?
At Valencia?
Yeah, we're having llamas come for the.
Who has llama?
A guy in Shelburne, Katie and Nikki. Starting at eleven.
I've met him on top of Mount Pratt.
Oh, really?
His llamas, and he lives right at the bottom of Mount Pratt, right?
I don't, this guy is from the Shelburne, and yeah, he's very nice.
He hikes with them, yes.
So that's at eleven, he's coming.
Yes, I'll send you an email.
You can also do a trip over to the lull. They've got a huge farm over there, and they've also got camels.
Oh, boy.
Llamas are part of the camel's family.
I learned, I learned the difference between two hump and single hump camels.
You didn't sign this.
Oh, there's, she did say.
I don't know that we need three, do we?
I only have, is there two or three?
Three, you don't need three?
I think we only need one. You're not gonna listen.
Well, she's gonna keep one of your.
I'm gonna keep one of our.
I'm gonna sign her off.
You'll just have to.
I'll keep one.
Wait a minute, did you sign one? With bad. I have trouble.
Pen?
Yep.
Only a black, why they gotta be blue?
So they can see that it's not.
So I feel like then we know it's the original.
I've always been.
I don't know. I mean, I suppose you could write that they're black, just, I, you know, I don't know. Do you have a blue pen?
No.
Probably doesn't really matter. They say black, last one is blue.
I have to go back down.
Detached garage. Yeah. Do you go through Ox very much? You go through Norway, okay.
Look at you.
You know, by the register. Yeah, you might drop it off.
No. Well, I wanna take one.
I went, I drove through today, and I was like, of course, I don't have to win me. Yeah, yeah. Awesome, thank you.
Those are my seat belts.
All right, great, here we go.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That's your guy.
Good seeing you. Good to see you, too.
Okay, so now we are on to our oldest system, which is the J and C cell storage facility. And Courtney, we still have to find the application complete, is that true? Okay, I know we have a sidewalk, and the base not on there, but that's okay.
Because these are all findings that you guys already had, you should have your old finding of fact, so that can be on there.
Well, I'm not.
No, I can send new ones, you have your original, so the sidewalk wouldn't be on there.
Oh, I see what you mean, yes, thank you.
You did find standing? Did you see the fine complete?
Complete application, so we have the, I, I think the application is completely a stormwater. We have agent authorization. We have, if anybody gets M D O T stuff, so does somebody wanna make a motion?
I make a motion that the application is complete.
Second?
Second.
Peter, second. All those in favor? Okay, so I guess we'll begin by asking you, have you made any change to the plans you want us to look tonight based on the sidewalk in any way?
Yeah, so we haven't proposed any changes to the plan. What we've done is, we've gone through and kind of evaluated a bunch of the options that we talked about last time, so that's kind of what we're prepared to talk about tonight is those different variations of the site that could be considered, and kind of why we arrived at the one that we did. So we just kinda wanna talk about that in some more detail, and I think some of the photos that we brought here tonight will kind of help illustrate some of those things. And I just wanted to just bring to your attention as well, I did, I forwarded a copy to Courtney today, but we did receive our D E P permit for the project, the stormwater permit. So that came in last week, so just so you're aware that that's approved.
And I'll just call attention to the, to the board that there is a letter from the abutter who joined the sidewalk.
Yes, okay.
And, you know, you can refer to that if you need to for the deliberations. So we'll let you go ahead and review with us what is still the, the developed concept.
So the, the couple of options that we kind of came away from at the last meeting that the board thought would be worthy to kind of look at as alternatives to what we're proposing would be, one of the options was to essentially rotate all the buildings ninety degrees, so that the, kind of the shorter ends would be facing the roadway, and that they'd be going, you know, away from the roadway, so everything would be rotated ninety degrees. One of the things that we kind of showed attention to at the sidewalk was just the natural grade of the land that all drains towards the road. So that's one of the things that we consider when we do these layouts, is trying to work with the natural topography, so you don't end up with abnormally, you know, tall sites that don't really fit in with the natural character of the land. So we try to work with what's there, and that's what kind of benefits this type of a layout, so that you've got, because the buildings need to be level, so we're allowed, we can step the buildings down as they get closer to the road. So it wasn't really feasible to rotate them ninety degrees just due to site constraints. And then another thing, just from a visual standpoint, these pictures that I gave you are of two different facilities. So the first three photos that are here are all of the Oxford facility across from the Speedway on twenty six. And then the last two photos are on Route three oh two in Naples, directly across the street from Dunkin' Donuts. So if you look at kind of the second to last photo, which is just from here, that shows, for that project, we designed kind of one building parallel to the road, and then the rest of the buildings are all going the other way. And as you can see, when you do that, you actually have a lot more of the building with the doors on it that you can see as you're driving by. So this is the view that you would see if you traveled in south on three oh two, you would basically be looking at the buildings that extend away from the roadway, you can kind of see the whole massing of the buildings. So it's not, it's not the approach that you wanna take if your goal is to kind of soften the look and not have it be such a, such a big looking building. So another reason why we didn't propose it that way on this site. And then we had talked about the potential to add pitched roof to these buildings. We certainly have the capability to do that, and you can see from these photos, a facility in Oxford, so those first three photos, those all have the flatter roof style, which is what we're, what would be our preferred approach for this project. And again, looking at those first three photos, you can just see that the massing of the building stays fairly low when you have the drawn pitch roof. The last two photos, the Naples facility, you have a pitched roof along that front building.
And what is the scale of that pitch in New York?
Yeah, I believe that is a, is a three twelve, I believe.
You're talking about the, the front shed?
Yes.
It looks more than like a five.
Yeah, it's. It could be, it could be a five twelve. That was something that they did, that that project was approved with all flat roofs, and then the builder, the owner of that project just decided to do a, a pitched roof building on the front there. So that's something that we could do on this project, if you felt that you liked that look, and you wanted to do a pitched roof on the, on the front buildings, and then we could have the flatter roof on the six buildings that are behind it, and that would be more in line with kind of what we did in Naples. If we go with a pitched roof on all the buildings, they just kind of all blend into each other, and the whole site just gets a lot taller looking. And the, the buildings that are behind the front one, again, as you're driving by, you don't really see those as much, and aren't as prominent as that front building. And so I don't know.
Explain the difference in height, is there any difference in height between the larger ones at the back than the ones in the front?
So if we go with the very shallow pitched roof that we're talking about, it would be negligible, you wouldn't really see a difference in, in building height. If you were to require the five twelve pitch on the wider buildings, then it adds up, and you get it to these wider buildings, it would be, you know, maybe a foot to eighteen inches taller, if you have a wider building compared to, I mean, these, well, I say that, these buildings here, these buildings ideally would kind of shed away from the road, so these buildings here wouldn't have a pitched roof, they'd be all pitched in one direction to the back.
What, the shed, what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, it's a shed style roof, but again, the, the look where if you go with the style that we have in Oxford, you don't really see it, it's basic, because it's such a flat pitch.
What, how much pitch are you talking on the storage? Because there, there's no drawings in here showing building height.
Yeah, so the buildings are a ten foot soft at the height, and then the pitch that we're proposing is, is basically a half to one, so a half of an inch per foot, so they're, they're fairly flat.
Okay.
You know, one time we talked about putting the larger buildings also in the front, that was something we talked about. Is that anything you had thought of?
So we did look at that option as well. There's kind of two primary reasons that we, that this is kind of the preferred layout. One, we have to direct the water that comes down from above us, out and around this facility, so we have our, these stormwater ponds over the front that collects all the runoff from the paved areas and the roofs of the front six buildings. The rear two that shed off the back, those get collected in a drip edge along that rear side, and then basically gets routed out and around the building. We're not permitted with, by collecting all this water and just piping it into the D O T system, we had to be careful about how much of this offsite water we were gonna collect and run through and treat in that filter pond and tie into the system, so we had to do some separation of the two. So that was the, the big reason why we had to lay it out this way. The other one is if we were to mirror it, you remember the grade state that we had set out in the field that represented the front of that building? So if we flipped it, and we didn't have that drive aisle in the front, then that, that building would actually be twenty-two feet closer to the road than it otherwise would be, because everything would slide forward in order to, you know, kind of fit a similar footprint if it was just flipped over, so.
And what's the setback right now? I'm trying to figure it out.
Yeah, so it's, it's a thirty, it's a thirty foot setback to here. But again, this, this leading edge of the, of the building right here would be on the edge of pavement line here. So that building would be the width of this driveway, which is twenty-two feet. That grade state we looked at in the field was here, and instead, the corner of the building would be here. And then we'd have to, basically have a longer driveway coming in to kind of go out and around this first building versus being able to come right in at a corner like we have it now, which provides kind of the best circulation for getting around the buildings. The other thing that, you know, if you, if you kind of look at the pictures on the last two, that Naples facility has the one building along the road with the pitched roof, and it's a very long metal base, even though it doesn't have the doors on it, without the color variations and everything, it's just a very, very long building. And I mean, I don't love it, driving by, looking at it, it's just, you know.
Well, that's, that's very easy to take care of, you push shrubs up.
Yeah.
If, if you flipped that and brought it down that twenty-five feet, twenty-two roughly, whatever, that would help the buffer that the neighbors would like. I also think that it would be better having the driveway come, you turn in, you.
Would see people loading and unloading from the front, because the driveway's not there?
Right, but you also, so I sat in that this afternoon and looked at that, and envisioned driving, turning off Route two and coming into forty-five, where you've got traffic trying to come from the right out of those businesses and cut across as somebody's trying to cut at a forty-five. And granted, there's not a lot of traffic, but it's, it's looking for potential problems down the road. I just think that, I think that it would be better if the entrance, if you turned in off Route two, turned ninety and left, because you gotta have the people that are on right be able to cross that traffic of anybody turning in, granted, there's not gonna be a lot.
Well, what's the difference between that and the two businesses that are already there? Actually, there's three, only four businesses right there, there's no difference. I mean, what you're doing is you're asking one business to do something that the other three aren't.
Well, the other, the other three, right now, if you pull in off Route two, you pull in, you gotta turn right to go to them, or you turn left and go here, so they're different than any other place.
Well, that one's gonna be the same way, you're gonna go into the driveway at the.
Right, but this is coming right off Route two at a forty-five.
No, it's, they're sharing, aren't they sharing the driveway?
Yeah, they're sharing.
Yeah, but how far?
It's.
I didn't see anything in there.
It comes straight in, so the.
How far off?
So this is basically the curb line, if you were to extend it out.
Okay.
That's, that's the curb line out there, so as you turn in, and this goes this way.
Okay, okay.
So there's gonna be like an apron right there where they can come out of that, out of that stuff.
Right, yeah, so as, so when someone comes up here and the gate opens, and they come out, if somebody's parked carrying the lead, you got a whole space there before you come out and it stops.
I missed the length of the apron going into the road, I guess.
And we also have this kind of defined space here, our access has to be located inside this, we don't have any rights. this shit, we don't have any rights to get onto this property beyond this line here, so we have to kind of peel off.
Okay. Can you speak to your plans for secure gate fencing?
No. So, we'd like to install a black chain link fence along this side here, so we would basically just run it along the property line in this location. We're gonna have an automated gate here for the keypad entry. So we would, we would fence this, and then we've got the gate here, and then, we're currently showing just a guardrail along this edge, but we could, we can fence along this side as well. We do have these big ponds, so people can't really get through there, so this can be chain link fence along the side. And then, for now, this is all wooded, we don't really need to fence it, but if this property were to be developed in the future, we would probably at that point extend the fence up this side. There's no need to fence it in the rear, but if this has open access like this site does now, I mean, potentially we'd turn the corner on the fence up here, but for now, it's really just this side that needs the fence. You know, we, we, we can put it along the front here, or we could do a wood guardrail, if you have a preference, one or the other.
Are you gonna do it across the back where the break is in the two buildings?
Nope, we weren't proposing defense at this side. There's real no access to that, it's mostly just, you know, we don't want people to really get in with a trailer or something like that.
And let's go over the proposed landscaping.
Yep, so, over here. We're proposing, oops, let's see. So these are those stormwater ponds that'll be built in the front, so what we have is basically as, as this comes down, they'll drop down into a low pond area and there'll be a berm that comes out back and matches into existing grades. So this will be fairly flat, it'll come up slightly, it'll be depressed down into this pond area, come back up into this edge of pavement here. And then we're proposing to just do a row of red maple trees along the front of this here that will grow up. We can supplement that with extras if you'd like, but that, those tend to, over time, they fill in nicely.
Is that a native tree, red maple?
Let me see them.
Okay, I'm thinking of the things I had in my property once.
Yeah, it's a good balance between, it, it kind of looks somewhat ornamental, but it's, it's a native style and they, yeah.
And how, and the scale of them as they go in will be what height are you aiming for?
Usually we, we plant them based on like caliper height, so, so basically a, like a two-inch tree when they get planted is pretty common. You can get them as much as three-inch, but they have very large root balls.
All righty.
We don't have any landscape drawing with that structure in it, other than that, that one page?
Just on the site plan, we had shown...
Yeah, I saw the site plan.
Yeah, we just shown the trees going along the front.
Is there a note on the site?
Yes, it's right here, see them little circles? And it says red maple.
Okay, so there's how many, Sue?
Six, three, four, five, six.
Okay. Let's now address the color scheme. You are proposing this brown tone and the green doors, is, are we understanding you correctly, or when that's...
Yeah. Yeah, I think the, the second, probably the one kind of shows a nice close-up of, of the colors.
All right, so...
Yeah, the third one as well, the third one, you know, this, this helps to show like the texture and the...
Yes, I see.
Third one.
Okay. As I recall, those were the main issues we raised. Now, the letter from the abutter, has everybody been able, had a chance to look at that? That abutter is asking for consideration by this board of two, I'm, I said, um, piece of paper again, thank you.
Here, you wanna get mine?
Oops, Jim's, yeah, so, one is something we've already discussed, which is, I made a decision yet, but is moving everything forward, she's suggesting, we're suggesting twenty-five feet. And then the second suggestion is evergreen type trees between the back of the facility and the buffer zone. So...
Okay, can we even move that twenty-five feet forward? It's gonna be out of code, isn't it?
No.
What is it right now, thirty? Five?
No.
Forty. So we put it fifteen feet off the lot?
We go twenty-five.
So let's look at our, let's look at our code book and just remember in...
See thirty, right here.
So that, that doesn't sound like that's gonna happen, because we'd be in the, I said...
Yeah, I don't think you can do that.
So is that ruled out technically? That seems not...
How many feet off the rear property line is the building?
Yeah, I mean, we're about twenty-five feet off the rear line. Yeah, it's a thirty-foot front setback, but what, what really drives the placement of that, that front, whether it's pavement or building, kind of that leading edge closest to the road, is just the design of the stormwater facilities out front. So what we did is, we've got minimum standards that we had to meet the D E P and we just kind of tried to, you know, bring everything forward to the extent that we could and just meet those minimum standards and then D O P as well required a certain amount of detention on site to be able to connect into the storm drain system.
Commercial setbacks? Or did somebody already find it?
No.
So without town sewer, it's thirty feet from the property line?
So we can't move it forward?
No, and without town sewer is twenty, uh, hold on, so the front is thirty and the rear insides are twenty.
Okay, so that first request, and then we can consider when we go through the findings of fact, or now, if people want to, because there's several key issues that we'll have to make some thoughtful decisions about. Jim, what is your point here now? Do you want to ask a question?
No, I'm trying to remember where sewer stops up there and it doesn't go across the river and stop.
No, I expect to go down the other way.
I have a question.
Yeah.
The back of those two buildings that would be facing the abutter, what is, what do they look like, or is that just plain?
No, it's, it's plain metal across the back and, and we did talk to the, the property owner at the site walk and I think if you, would you think of it from an activity perspective? So everybody's gonna be basically driving around the site to get to their unit, so if we were to flip this and go the other way and try to slide everything forward and we have a drive aisle that now runs behind the buildings, because this would now be the rear line, now that's gonna be the, the main route for people that need to get over here, they're gonna come in and drive around the facility to get around to these units, so they're actually gonna have a lot more activity going on closer to their property. This way, it's basically, once the construction's done and these are in, I mean, the buildings almost buffer the use from these residences, because there's no more driving around the buildings, all the people that are waiting and loading and unloading, no matter where they are, everything is kind of shielded by these two buildings. So I think that provides the most benefit to them, is to keep these buildings here without, without trying to slide it forward and have drive aisles around that.
All right, so let's review for ourselves the sort of issues before we even get into the findings of fact, this might be helpful for us and I'm looking for the right, oh God almighty, help me here, site plan.
What are you looking for?
So I just want to point out a couple of things to folks. We have our compatibility standards, I, one forty, twenty-six, two dot two. This is the newest amendment to our site plan ordinance, it says we can require pitched roofs, remember this, the five twelve. Building facade colors shall be compatible with other buildings in the vicinity and exterior building materials shall be compatible with the aesthetic, aesthetic quality of, on all sides of the building. There's also the standard under, on one forty, twenty-six dot two, which says the planting board may require a buffer strip, and I'm, I'm only saying that because the, a butter has asked for some tree planting back there. So here are the things that we have to reach some conclusions about, and they're not the pitch issue, the fencing issue, that deals with the compatibility of fitting into the neighborhood and the kind of materials that'll be used, trees at the back, whether we think that's appropriate given this development, and the color issue. So I want to hear people's thoughts, let's take them one at a time, otherwise I'm gonna get totally bollocked up. Let's begin with the pitch. Is there a sentiment among the board about the pitch? I'd like to hear from everybody, please, starting with you.
No problem with the pitch.
Okay, Pete?
If anything, I would, I would ask for pitched roofs on the front two buildings and then in the back, let them, let them be what they are.
And you're thinking there is, that'll help the neighborhood out back better?
No, I don't think that has anything to do with the, the neighborhood at all, no, I think it would just look...
Better on the road.
Neat, neat, sort of what's, what else is out there in terms of roof pitch. I don't think anyone's gonna really notice what's back behind, but if, if I were to ask for something, that's, that would be...
I would say at least a pitch, a better pitch on the front two buildings, this is a standard we held the Napa building to, and I don't think we can go back now and do something different, that would not be fair to them.
The, the problem I have with the pitch is that the other storage facilities that are on Route twenty-six, are they that way?
They're not, but they, the, the first development of that was...
But the second one is, the second one is broadside, is parallel, it's...
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, when the first phase of that was developed, we didn't have these standards.
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about the second phase.
Yeah.
You're talking about pitch part of it?
Yeah.
They are pitched. There is pitch on, on both of them.
The ones on the South Bethel.
Yeah.
And the ones on the Sunday River Road that are Bethel, those are still in Bethel, those are pitched also.
So Jim, what's your...
I want to be consistent.
Okay, so having heard this information, are you, are you of the same mind?
I don't care, I don't think it makes a difference.
It's all right, Jim?
I think they should be pitched, I think it should be consistent with the rest.
Pitched, along with Peter's solution or?
At least the front. Part of me says that consistent with the other self-storages in the area that are pitched, it would look good, but they're not right beside, they're in different sections, so it's kind of a draw, but at least the front should definitely be pitched.
Jody?
I agree with the front, and I don't agree with the back, just to keep it lower than everybody behind there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm of the same mind about the front two buildings being pitched, okay.
Is the Napa building, is that a five twelve pitched roof? It seems flatter.
Uh, it's a, that could was a four twelve or a five twelve?
I think it's a five twelve.
I think they, because the minimum is five twelve, and they were actually at one point proposing something higher and then realized the heating costs were...
Yeah, because whatever the Napa pitch is, that seems like it's not too bad, so I think we could do the front two buildings and just match what they did.
Kind of, most people...
Our code says minimum five twelve.
Yeah, most, most people look at that and they kind of think that, that's a general, five twelve is a general, they think that and kind of...
Yeah, I know we did five twelve on that addition up in that store yesterday.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we've dealt with pitch, how are we feeling about the request for some conifer, is it conifer she was requesting? At the back, evergreens, a string of them at the back.
Are there gonna be, are the, are the, are the trees that, behind the facility, the trees that are on the, between there and the property line, the existing trees are just gonna stay or are you gonna cut over the property line?
So we're proposing to cut to the property line, the, the subdivision back here had a...
She has her own.
She has a buffer there, but I think she's concerned about kind of the understory where we cut up through that, and there's a lot of large trees and maybe, it sounds like she's concerned about the understory, so maybe the planting of some evergreen trees will help to fill in that understory, the under canopy stuff, so that, just to make more of a complete...
Just don't do our bodies, one of them on the understory is up here.
Yeah, no, it'd be like a, like a white pine or a spruce or something like that.
So Bob?
Cut to the property line. They want, put in that storage facility in there and they wanted to say raise corn in that field, they could cut to the property line and, and they wouldn't have to come before the planting board. I don't see that there's an issue on the tree line. They have at least a hundred feet so, from the property line to the building, I don't see a problem, I miss out. My contention is you don't own it, you don't control it, but that's not it.
Peter?
They don't go a hundred feet, they get...
I, I think that... I think that the, the landowner has more, more room to plant what they want.
Yeah.
Which one, or a restock? The butter has more, okay, so you would not...
The butter can just choose what to plant and plant what they want to plant and then they'll get to see what they want to see, as opposed to having these guys guess what they want to see and not necessarily get it right, because you never know.
All right, Sue?
Boy, that's a, this is a tough one, I don't know. I will say this, sometimes it's nice to do these things, to make good neighbors with people, you know? I will say that.
The standard, just to remind you all, is that we, we can ask for, you know, buffers of some sort when we think the separation is desirable. So, I mean, it's around the fact that are we talking about, you know, uses that are not compatible, you know, compatible uses like kind uses, so I'll stop there, do you, are indecisive?
I am really indecisive about this one, I, and I'll tell you why, is I wish I could have walked back to her property and seen through at where the line is, because I don't know if it's an overreaction on their part or if it's not, you know? Without seeing it, it's, it's very hard for me to make a decision.
Jim?
I'm in the same thought as Sue, but to help, I was just gonna...
Do your Google stuff?
Bring up maps and, and see if that...
Their house isn't on the map yet, we looked earlier.
Jody, what's your thinking about this?
I think it would be a nice thing to offer, I, I agree that we don't have to, that's not something we should force, but I don't think it's a bad thing to ask for.
I, I, I will say for myself, I get your sentiments, Peter, about let the property owner do it, but I, I would be supportive of a row of evergreens there, I think it will help the softening. So it seems to me that we have two people with a, we don't have a consensus on this, so think about it as we get to findings of fact and we'll make our decision then. Now we have the fencing issue. The proposal is black chain link fence, I will, just as a matter of fact, state that, as I understood your presentation, the absolute minimum is between that and the, a butter, the beverage of butter.
Yeah.
Absolutely has to be fenced. And that there needs to be some sort of either metal or wooden guardrail, so nobody backs off and falls into the detention pond for safety. So Bob, again?
If you require, to require a fencing around that one, you should require a fencing around the others.
We're not requiring, they, as a company.
They want to put it on one side.
Yes, right.
But, you know, here again, I'm on consistency, those two old facilities on Route Two have no fencing around them, the one on the Sunday River Road, I believe, had no fencing around it, so why are we making them put fencing?
We're not, they would like the fencing.
If they want it, that's fine, then they can put it up, but I don't think it should be anywhere in the findings of fact or, or a board decision that we require them to
We're not requiring them, but if they propose to put it up because of the standard about compatibility and look...
But if you put that in there and they, then they decide, well, maybe we, we don't need to do that, they're still on the obligation that they have to do it.
So the, the plans currently don't show fencing other than the gate and we show the guardrail along the front, what we'd like, what we've, I guess are requesting is to kind of, at our discretion, have, be allowed to fence in as much as we want, if there's certain parts... If there's certain parts of the site you don't want fenced because of aesthetics, then we can note that and not put fence in certain areas if you don't like the look of it. But our preference would be to just be able to fence the site in if, if we want to. Because then it allows us to, if neighbors move in, we can provide the security that the customers want.
Well, I won't speak yet, oh, Peter?
I, I mean, so that the question is really what we think of the aesthetics of black chain link fence. That's really the issue.
Correct, yes, yes, because of the standards of being compatible with surrounding properties. There are no fencing, chain link fencing in that area, so.
Right, so, so, and we don't have any?
We don't have a fencing standard.
That's what I, that's what I.
We have to judge it on the basis of that compatibility standard.
Yeah, so I, I, I don't have a particular opinion at this time. I mean, I, I just don't even have a feeling for what the range of possibilities, like, I don't have, I don't have a favorite fencing style.
Yeah, the first photo here just kinda shows it well, just for reference.
Sue?
Yes, they got a fencing.
I really do not wanna fence across the front at all whatsoever. Unless it's gonna be really full landscape, because I just, I don't know, it's just my opinion. Maybe down the side if you feel like it's necessary, but I don't know. I'm not a, I, I, I don't love fences, so that's just me.
Jim?
So a chain link fence, I don't know if it's gonna.
It's black.
It's sorta gonna look ugly. The trees would help that, trees are only gonna help that in the summer. I kinda, I kinda agree with Sue on, I'm not sure I like the chain link in the front, but maybe if they were to do something in the front, they could do something more in lines like a wooden post, post fence, like what the Sunday River Storage has.
Or wrought iron, I don't know, I'd rather see.
It just, it just, I understand having it and it stinks that we have to put a fence around everything, but.
Well, across the front though, it seems like there's a, there's like a moat there, kinda. It's not like someone's gonna just go blazing through there.
I have been through, I've been somewhere in Bethel where there is that dip off to a low reception and I saw two cars at night, forget, forget, and backed.
They, they do it at the brewery constantly. They actually drive through the field, out of the parking lot, through the field, they're not bull.
So there, I think there is a safe, from my perspective, there could be a safety issue. Yeah.
I mean, we definitely want to do like fall protection, so that's why we've got the guardrail shown on there. So that would be like a, like a pressure treated wooded guardrail, similar to what you have on the side of a road.
And that's just right across the front of that.
Yeah, so they don't.
So it's like metal?
It's, no, it's pressure treated wood.
It's all wood, yeah. So, but it's, it's basically like highway grade, it's, you know, wooden driven piles with pinky rails. So we're, right now, we're proposing that along the entire frontage here. That's all, shorter guardrail, all wood. So that's what we're proposing here. I, I just put out there the option to put metal chain link fencing somewhere out here, but what I'm hearing is we don't wanna see that, so we don't.
I wanna add, Jody, your thoughts?
I think we need it on the, on the right hand side.
We needed that, because maybe that whole fence concept.
Should be the whole thing.
Should be the whole thing, instead of a chain link.
What security issue are you trying to address on the side? Is it that the car won't come over into this new development or that people won't walk into it? What, could you help us?
Yeah, so people can, so they're protected with a key code, so you have the gate and you go in there. If you're a customer, you have your own individual code. You punch it in, you can get in the gate, you can use the facility. And if, if somebody's not supposed to be there, if they're not a customer or if they're not paying a customer anymore, they can just go in, undo their lock or bolt cutters and take stuff out. So if, if they're easy, if it's easy for them to just drive in with a trailer or a pickup truck and unload. People aren't going to park in a beverage parking lot, climb over a fence or over a guardrail, get a bunch of stuff and go back and forth, it'll take a long time, police will know.
But a vehicle couldn't make it over a guardrail.
Uh, no, not over a guardrail, but.
I mean, a guard, like their wooden guardrail up front.
In theory.
In theory, I mean, I guess one could say in theory about a lot of things.
Yeah, I mean, it's been pretty common in these facilities that we do it, kind of again, on these side lot lines, we'll do the chain link fence. And then here, we've got kind of double protection, because like you said, we've got these ponds here, so people aren't gonna drive over the curb and through the ponds to get in and hoping that on purpose.
Or back into them.
Or, or try to drive through this way. So I think we have the protection here with just the guardrail will be sufficient. But the chain link fence here will keep people from, you know, they'd have to walk way out and around and down through here and out. It's, it's only gonna discourage the oldest people. Yep, and that's, and that's all we can really do.
And Jody, what is your feeling about this?
Well, I like the idea of the guardrail across the front, definitely. What about the rest of the places in Bethel? Do they all have chain link fences like that?
No.
No, what?
Wooden fence in Sunday.
Wooden fence on Sunday River Road.
That's more like a split rail.
It's not up there.
It's a pretty small facility too, you only have a couple of small buildings.
All right, so I share the sentiment of just a wooden guardrail on the front. And I would like to see if there's any additional protection from intrusion, it to be of wood. Myself.
The only, the only intrusion you'd have would be pedestrian intrusion that you would wanna put up a chain link fence against. Other, otherwise.
You're saying the safety is compromised by the big openings?
Other than that, I agree with the, the wood aspect. It could be if they had, if they had problems with theft, they might wanna secure the whole, the whole area with chain link fence, trying to keep people out.
I just think that, you know, I, I totally get the fact that split rail fencing will not impede people 'cause they can go through it, but there's other types of wood fencing on that side. Is there not other options?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, wood fencing, especially like with plowing, tends to be not very durable. But, but that's the biggest issue, you know, bio fencing, wood fencing.
Chain link fence is the same way. I mean, chain link will catch it and bend, the wood will break, you replace the wood a lot cheaper. But if you got a competent plower, he's not gonna plow, be plowing, should be plowing into it.
Yeah.
So I, I think that giving you permission, in my mind, for fencing in any place you feel, chain link fencing in any place you feel is appropriate, I could not live without nothing in the front. And on the side, again, my preference would be for some sort of wooden option. Maybe it's not so big a gap or whatever, that's just me. So it sounds like everybody's of the mind that the wooden guardrail on the front is the best suitable solution for the safety issue and we might be a little split on the side fencing.
So the wooden stuff too, you can't see through. It helps with the, like the security of the facility to be able to see through and see what's going on in between the aisles and stuff. So again, if you're just driving down the road.
What about the guardrail though? What's, what is the problem with putting that guardrail down the side as well, the wood one?
Um, we do have a drainage ditch along that side that we're kind of, you know, creating in between this property and the other. So it's not the same situation where the guardrail on the front side there is prominent right up against the edge of the pavement. Our, our preference would be to be able to do the fencing. We basically would come off the end of this building, whether it's here or here. We tie it into the building, come off, right down to here, and then tie it back into the fence. So, so we'd have the gate here and the fencing would just come off of this, go up here, and then tie it back into the corner.
What about the wrought iron? Like, I looked at the fencing at the front of this building, you know what I mean? It's, it's, the rail, it's attractive, it has the minimal spacing. I would offer that as a solution.
Yeah, I mean, so if, if the fencing is a big hangup, I mean, we could look at doing like some boulders or something, some rocks, and some of them that's a little more natural looking.
It's really just to keep people from driving in.
I think through.
Right.
Where are you planning on, it's an obsolete question, sort of, but where are you planning on putting all the snow? Yeah, so basically, they plow straight off the ends here, just right off all these ends here and then off the ends this way. We get a fence on the right hand side. Yeah, we, we'd put it down in the property line here. So there's, you know, probably about 20 feet there from the edge of pavement to the, the property line. 'Cause we'd wanna have all that space available for snow storage. Yeah, so it's basically right along this edge here, this edge here. I mean, we have guardrail here, we're not gonna be able to push over the front.
How do people feel about boulders? I'm a boulder fan.
I'm all the way around my property.
Yeah, okay, so we may have a possible solution there. And the last issue is color. The proposal is for two tone, as we've seen in the photographs. And the standard that we have to address is. Building facade colors shall be compatible with other buildings in the vicinity. Standard corporate and tradeback colors shall be permitted only on the signage. Bob?
I don't care what color, it could be pink, I don't think, along with its table. I look at the movie theater.
Yeah, it's art.
Yeah. Pete?
I, I, this color scheme thing seems fine to me. I mean, it fits in pretty well with.
If you look at the one down at Oxford, I mean, they're all on that, I think.
Sue, that's Oxford. I'd love to see it more of a not so different color of building versus the door, like, again, what we brought Napa to. And that's what I'm, I'm really gauging, a lot of what I'm saying on where we ended up with Napa. We set a precedent.
And, uh.
It's kind of a block. And it, I stand to look at the colors and it's, okay, what's in the rest area? Yes, the house, and yes, air haven. It's, this just looks.
Well, we've got a lot of gray, brown underlying on the neighbors.
Yeah, there's, there's just so much. It's not like it's just a 30 by 40 house, it's a big home.
And Jody?
I like the, the idea of the green. I think it blends, I mean, especially in these pictures with leaves off, it blends. But it would be nice if they all matched a little bit closer.
Meaning not so much contrast.
And we're gonna have, yeah.
I, I would feel the same.
I think it feels like it jumps at you because of that and stuff.
I would, I would like to see the body color to be a little darker, even, even like the Napa-ish color.
What is the Napa?
It's darker, it's a, it's, it's a gray, brownie darker. You'll have to drive by to look at it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm waiting for that to pop up, because it's kind of like they're still.
Well, they're putting in what, false barn doors in and certain places and the banding is stone, so faux rock. So, but the basic brown color is up now.
Okay, yeah.
So it's, it's not tan, it's a darker brown, but everyone's saying here, they don't object to the green doors. And Sue, me and Jody may be a not so contrasty, so a slightly darker brown than you.
Yeah, sometimes, sometimes it's just.
I don't know what word I wanna use, I don't know.
I mean, I, and I will say again, Napa really wanted to do bright blue, we said no.
I, I understand.
They were gonna go in their.
That's their colors.
And sorry, Bob, but people would not.
Yeah, if you do, if, if the colors are, I'm just something to think about. And, and we have a range of colors we can choose from, but if the doors and the buildings get too close in color, it starts to really just look like a big wall of, of the same. So one of, that's one of the reasons a lot, it's, there's been kind of a, it used to be a lot of like white, white and blue doors. It's used to see a lot of those in the eighties and stuff. And pretty much most of the facilities for a, a bunch of different clients have kind of gone to this look. You know, they stay away from the reds and the yellows, 'cause there's like publicly traded companies, you know, that, that, that's their brand and that's what they do. These ones here just tend to blend in more with the background.
I would say shade.
If you go and look at the, the ones on Sunday River Road.
Yeah.
I like them. They, they've got contrast between the doors and the trim and the building.
Is that a trim, right?
And a wooden fence out front, it just, it just.
They're very, they're very, they're a very dark brown.
Yeah, it's, it, it fits, it fits well with the area.
But I, I mean, that's a very common main inland fishery and wildlife color. And they always use green as an accent.
Lori, can you just read the standard again? Because I mean, it does just say that it has to be compatible with other buildings in the vicinity. So I just wanna make sure you all are staying with that. I mean, just clarify if you wanna read the full standard.
Compatible with.
But this is, this has a bit of massing on it, so color here to me does matter more than, and then, not that it didn't matter elsewhere, but, all right. So we've had a chance to talk individually and collectively now about the bigger issues. Is there anything else before people are ready to move on to the findings of fact where we'll have to resolve the language on these issues?
Just for an FY on X map, the approximate distance from the property line to the butter's house is about 150 feet. Eighty, eighty, eighty yards.
I think it was a requirement on their subdivision plan.
For 100.
I think, I think that was put in there, I think that there was kind of an acknowledgement that this was commercial land along the road and that there'd be some development on there to, to make sure that it would be some ample buffer reserve on those lots. You wouldn't have it, it's compatible.
Okay, guys, so what's, are we ready to start on the finding of fact? And we'll deal with these one, two, three, four issues as we go through the finding of fact. And you have a copy of the finding of fact to go along with us?
Um, I believe I do from the last time, so, yeah, go ahead and do it.
Okay, all right, so we'll look at page one, dealing with pollution. Not resulting in any undue air or water pollution, sufficient water, NA, the project will not be utilized anymore. A very good use of NA. Municipal water supply, NA, the project will not be connecting to municipal water. I'm on page two. Erosion, applicant had, will be, will not be disturbing areas with slope of greater, 20% or greater and will follow best management practices. Applicant has also provided a stormwater management plan that we can say that has been approved by DEP now. Okay?
Do we have that?
Yes.
The approval came, it's the same suggestion.
I have a, it's like a nine-page document, if you'd like to see it, it's essentially just says that they're approved to connect to the stormwater, so we trust you.
Do we need to record that in?
Well, we, we, we will make note here that they have it and whatever date it is.
Approval by DEP. I mean, some people come from the board and they're still waiting.
They need approval.
Because if you don't hear approval in so long, sometimes they consider that acceptable.
So let's add that language. Courtney, that DEP approval of stormwater plan has been provided. Traffic met will not cause unreasonable highway traffic, existing driveway permit, project is expected to generate six peak hour trip ends.
And do, and MDOT has approved that, right? So we should just, to be consistent, put MDOT approval?
Yeah, existing driveway permit provided by MDOT. Okay, we're on sewage disposal, NA, will not have any sewage disposal as there's no water bathrooms on site. Municipal solid waste, during the building of the project, the applicant will contract with a private contractor. After the project is built, there'll be no dumpsters on site. Aesthetics, cultural and natural values, we have met, the project will have no adverse effect on aesthetics, cultural or natural values of the area. See section eight of the project packet, which refers to what, Courtney, section eight of the project? Let me just make sure I know what that says.
It should stay on the first couple pages.
Seven, eight. Section eight is consultation, yes, it's all the letters that we get. Okay, very, any questions there? And then conformity with local ordinances and plans, the unit is met, the project. Um, and then conformity with local ordinances and plans, we have it as met, the project is located on Mayville Road in a commercial area, and not located within shoreline or wetland zoning. Moving on to page three, parking, met. There will be no employees on site, parking for each storage unit will be in front of that unit. There will be no line parking areas as there will be no long-term parking or unattended vehicles. Okay. Trash, there'll be no dumpster on site. Setbacks, met, project meets all setbacks requirement. Height, um, and this is all newly constructed light industrial establishments or structures converted. If they're not, that's a, um, the buildings are, will be once, well, where, where do we get at the... Okay, the other part twelve is in another section, isn't it? Yes. Okay. Buildings will be one, I don't think we can say that because there's a possibility that we're gonna ask for the opportunity pitch. So how else would we say that? Buildings will not exceed thirty-five feet?
No, this will be one story.
One story, the buildings will be one story. Let's just say that.
Can we define a story?
Yes, we do.
Define a story.
Define a story is in, uh, in the code.
That's a separate matter for us. Lot requirements, a minimum of ten percent of the land shall be held and utilized in open space. Square footage of buildings will take up less than one acre on a two-point-six-three acre half. Loading birds, NA, not, it's not, not applicable in a, there'll be no need for a loading bird.
Can we back up?
Yeah.
Can we just clarify that?
Clarify what standard? Ten percent of the land utilized as open space?
Yeah, because... Unless I'm not seeing something right, between buildings and pavement.
Well, I don't know that pavement doesn't qualify as open space, Jen, it does.
Everything that's green on my colored land is land that we own, that is not gonna be...
It's grass, it's lawn.
That'll all be grass.
Open spaces?
Yeah, it is maybe ten percent. I mean, the pavement, because the pavement's not...
Yes, it qualifies as open space. It's not constrained by buildings.
But when it's pavement versus dirt, it's...
All right, we're on groundwater. And we have it as met, the project will not have sewer or water. NA on the petroleum product issue because we're not handling petroleum products. Number ten on page four is the financial and technical capacity. Technical capacity is shown on the GM Roma presenting before the planning board. Financial capacity is shown on the letter from Bank or Savings Bank. Surface water outstanding river segments, met, not located within a watershed or within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of wetland, pond, lake, or river. Groundwater, met, project will not adversely affect groundwater. Flood areas, met, not located in a hundred-year flood plain. Freshwater wetlands, there are no freshwater wetlands on this project. I'm on page five, farmland, no farmland is within the proposed site plan. River stream abrupt, no river stream or books are located within or but in the site. Stormwater, the applicant has provided a satisfactory stormwater plan in section six of the application materials. And we've already noted somewhere else that DEP approved it, so. Spaghetti lots, met, there are no spaghetti lots in Bethel. What does that mean, Courtney?
Uh, they have to do with like, I think, river, lakefront. I don't know, they've never existed in Bethel. It's a safe standard that we have to put in there. I'm not really sure, it's just, I know there's none here.
I don't think they've ever written, we've never written it that way before, that's okay.
Explain to me that it's just the way the road comes up, and kind of like what they, they threw spaghetti in there.
Um, so, lake phosphorus concentration, met, will not affect lake phosphorus concentration. Impact on adjoining municipalities, met, located solely within Bethel will not affect adjoining municipalities. For subdivision only, all of those are, well, they're using what, NA, not a subdivision. Now we're on the specific standards on page six. Conformance with other laws and regulations, applicant will consult with and obtain any needed permitting through the Board of Environmental Protection, and we know that has been already granted. Okay, we're at our first, um, issue, and this is the buffer strip, so we're...
That has to do with agricultural or woodland stuff.
What? Or other uses.
Okay.
So we keep forgetting that other uses, the, so that gives us, so this is the place, if we're going to ask for a tree row of evergreens, we need to put it in here. The way it's drafted right now, no agricultural managed woodlands are located within fifty feet of the project site. However, does anyone want to, um, I'm gonna suggest that we have a row of evergreens planted at the...
Backside.
Backside of the buildings, because no one's entering from the backside of those buildings. Or within, how many feet would you comfortably say?
Yeah, there's no entrances on the backsides, and it's, um, I think it's helpful to note as well that these buildings are being kind of cut down into the grade. So we're down here at elevation six seventy, and the natural grade at the property line is eight feet taller than the actual finished, the slab of the building. So in this corner here, as you recall, the grade comes up, and then it kind of goes up a little steeper. So we're actually cutting out this corner so that, you know, really only two feet of that building is gonna be up higher than the actual grade. From the, it's kind of down in it where we're cutting in. So if we were to be required to plant trees, down here, they're not gonna do any good because they're below. I mean, it would be at the property line, but, I mean, this, this is all a hundred feet of wooded area.
Yes, no, I, I, I realize that. I'm, I'm...
So you're sinking those back buildings down?
They, they're natural slopes.
It's a little bit steeper than we can accommodate for the grades. So we're actually excavating out this corner down, basically from here all the way out. We're digging that down and putting a, a swale in the background, in the back to catch the water. So the buildings, the finished grade of the buildings will be eight feet lower than the property line on those back buildings. So they sit down low, and the buildings are only ten feet tall.
Does that affect your feeling about planting?
No, I just didn't realize that until just now.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't, there's nothing in here showing it. So you don't have any site use to build.
Well, I, I, I would, I for one, and I'm the only one, would like to see at the property line some evergreen planting. No? No?
I agree.
I could go either way on it.
What, you, Jody?
I could go either way, too. I mean, it's nice to do, but knowing that, and there's only two feet, it'd be super easy for somebody to even put bushes on their property line to cover two feet.
So we're still kind of divided about that, so I'm gonna, um...
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion, then on the buffer strip, we, um, require, uh, under the standard that we can request something that, where separation is desirable, I will make a motion that we ask the applicant to plant a row of evergreens on the back property line.
Do you want to specify the height, style, or...
Well, he's got eight in the front, so I'm gonna suggest...
No, he's six in the front.
Six, I mean, I'll suggest eight in the back of, uh, probably on...
Christmas tree evergreen style versus...
Yeah, I don't like white pine because they...
He's just gonna follow the buildings.
The white pine.
No, we don't want that.
We could do, we could do eight spruce trees, minimum six foot height.
Yeah.
I've had time of anything.
Spruce.
I need a second, and then I need a vote.
I'll second it.
I'll second.
Jim already done.
Okay.
So we're ready to vote on this additional standard we would be applying? All those in favor? Okay, passes.
All opposed?
All those opposed, Bob, for the record?
That's right.
So we have, we're adding, um, the standard there, you'll put that in. Yes, eight spruce trees, six feet in height. Okay, moving on, roads and streets. Met, I'm on page six, applicant will need to purchase all street signs for the property. So are you, are we...
I don't know if you have street signs written on it.
No, I, I don't, I don't think we need any.
You're not gonna name each one of those little, the red lanes?
I'm doing with the Mayville Road address, everybody's on one, so...
Yeah, yeah. Okay. But here, uh...
Does there have to be, asking, because I don't know, does there have to be a stop sign?
To exist, no. Is there a stop sign there?
Well, there's only one business in the middle.
But we have so many of these places, and none of them have stop signs. I mean, hopefully, somebody wouldn't just dash into Route Two.
Oh, come on. It's usually just if it's a street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Particular access is met as roads have the capacity for extra vehicle trips, and the driveway permit has been approved by MDOT. We're now at the top of page seven. And not two or more, NA for two or more streets since the project has only project on one. Additional improvements, well, we are requesting the additional planting in the back.
I already noted that, though, do I need to note it here as well?
I think you should put it there again. Now, I would say that the issue of, um, uh, materials for fencing and the location of fencing, since it's not shown on the plan, has to be addressed somewhere, and I would put it here. And so what is the wishes of the board? Only, I think we had consensus, only a wood, um, pressure-treated wood, what did we call that? Guardrail on the front. And, uh, I'm looking for any other guidance, otherwise you're gonna get my words.
I would like to see the boulders on the side, I think that would really...
Yes, I think it's fabulous idea.
So, so no black chain link fence allowed anywhere?
Well, your, your front gate would be made of wood, sir.
It would need to be, it would need fencing on the gate.
Yes.
So here's, here's another.
Definitely.
So... The, the... The wooden guardrail across the front, if that ran up the side and then down the road, they had a problem. You could put the chain link in, and it would blend with the wooden guardrail down the side, as opposed to having boulders and then realizing they gotta put a chain link in, and...
With more boulders.
That's like asking him to do a double fence, and I don't think that's fair to have.
The boulders...
They're gonna put the boulders.
The boulders are only gonna stop somebody driving.
That's what he wants, that's what he wants.
The fences are all chain link, but they're vinyl coated with the black.
But you've said...
Is there a chain link over there?
Oh, the, the gate's not chain link.
Oh, what is the gate?
Yeah, the, the gate is, is, it's black metal, it's all painted. Do we have a picture of what the gate's gonna be on? Um, it's in the photos. It's got the metal, so they can drive right through chain link.
There you go.
You throw a strap around it.
I don't know, have you tried to find two with chain link fence?
Not yet.
I guess it becomes a, this one they had, yeah.
I think in previous, we gave us something.
See it on the last one.
Yeah, I guess the very last one showed pretty good.
It's a solid fence, solid gate, sorry.
There's a couple of options that we can do. I mean, that one there is black chain link, um, before it's crossed numbers. That's one option. We could also just do, um, again, painted black, but not the same style. I believe that, that included in my original application.
Why don't you check that? So let's just for the moment here, additional improvements, so far, we have the, um, trees at the back, repeating that. And we will put in, I think, the scent, um, uh, the, um, wood, um, help the guardrail at the front. And, uh, we, and boulders on the side of the Bethel beverage.
Do you want a motion for that, do you vote, or what's their opinion, how about? How hard is it to get boulders to put over there?
Uh, they're all logo.
That's...
In Maine?
And, and, and I don't...
In Bethel?
I don't think that, that's appropriate, I really don't.
I don't, no.
I'm totally a hundred percent against that.
So what do you think is appropriate?
So, but let's get a motion about...
If you want to put up a chain link fence, put up a chain link fence, what are you worried about? Is pedestrian traffic going in and out of there?
Right.
Okay.
And boulders.
I thought it was vehicular traffic.
Also, but... On the side, it's both. So it's more, it's vehicular and pedestrian traffic, depending on kind of the distance there, so, um, yeah, the, the boulders would help with the vehicles, but it's, um, it's really not gonna do what it needs to do as far as security goes. On that, on that side, only because it is so level, I mean, you could walk right through.
And you're saying that the guardrail does not do it either?
The guardrail on the front would do it.
No, on the side.
On the side, you could just kind of step over it, and you can, and you can pull a truck up right next to it.
Yeah, but you can climb over it.
Can you raise it a little higher for that side, so it's the same materials? And just make the guardrail a little higher, so that...
You can do double layer, double layer. I mean, you could do the same thing with a chain link fence. You can back up to it, you can climb over it. Somebody's that determined.
If they're, yeah, if they're that determined, it's, it's really...
I would say that the, that the guardrail on the side at a height that you think is appropriate.
I, I, I think it should be a wooden guardrail, even if it's a double layer of that side. I think it would, I think it would look good as a whole, but...
Okay, so for the purposes of voting on the standard that we're adding to, and it, um, I'm going to make the motion since, maybe I can put, summarize this. The, uh, we would mark it as met with the addition improvement of a, um, adding the tree planting at the back, and the same wording we used in the other section. Wooden guardrail at the front, um, and, uh, wooden guardrail at the side, with the height, um, at a level that the applicant feels is appropriate. So that's the motion.
Okay, I think...
Instead of the wooden guard, because, so on the side, can we just have the option to basically install fencing, as long as it's made of wood or natural material, so just specify that you don't want chain link, if that's what you want?
So you would prefer...
Because I don't know exactly what we're gonna do on that side, I better talk to the owner and think about it.
So fence, wooden fencing on the side?
Some sort, and it'd be kind of like at our discretion along that side. We're allowed to provide security fencing along that side, provided it's wood or natural material.
Sounds, that's a very reasonable.
Okay, so, I made the motion.
Do you want me to draw your motion?
No, I'll amend my motion to say that instead of, um, a wooden guardrail on the side with Bethel Beverage, it would be acceptable to have a natural material fencing, um, on the side. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Jim's gonna second, all in favor? Jody, all opposed? Two opposed, so it passes, okay.
No, that's only the amendment, now you've got to vote on your original motion.
Okay. I will ask for a vote on the amended motion.
No, on the original motion. You've already, you've already voted on the amendment to the motion, now you need to vote on the motion.
Okay, we'll have a vote on the motion, all those in favor?
Uh, just a minute, can I have a, have Courtney restate the motion?
The motion is that, that trees will, uh, as we've already noted, spruce trees will be planted along the black property line, and there will be a wooden guardrail at the front, uh, um, frontage, peril with Route Two, and a natural material fence along the side with Bethel Beverage. All those in favor?
Do we need a motion?
No, she's not.
Oh, I made the motion.
That's, that's the mo, original motion. Then she amended her motion. We voted on the amendment, now we have to go back and vote on the original motion, and that's what we're doing right now.
Okay.
So that's, so that needs a second, no?
No, it's all set.
No, it's all set.
All in favor? Okay, pass it.
All opposed?
All those opposed. Got them.
And, uh...
So we're marking it met with that language. Arkeal...
Can we, can we just get on the chain link fence, I mean, sorry, the gate?
So, uh, well, the gate is not, well, it needs that... So, well, the gate is not, that's part of his proposal, it's not our proposal. So, what are you saying the gate will be?
Yep, we include photos in, in the plan. So, it's, it's a black metal gate. We don't have, we don't have a lot of options as far as.
Yeah, and I think keeping it open is better than keeping it, yeah, keeping it shut.
So, just from personal experience, I can tell you that the upward lawn is painted in that.
Oh, yeah.
Around here, people like to just walk in and it's. That, you just gotta make your room for sliding.
So, I think we're set, round fourteen, archaeological sites, project is not met, not located within archaeological sites. See section ten of the application. Packet fifteen, met, does not impact historic building or site. Moving on to site plan only standards.
Yeah, that's gotta be completely agreed written. Is that included chain link fence?
Yep, well, we can take that chain link fence will be, just take that out. That's part of the sentence, that sentence. Just take it out, and the access gate will be black chain link fence.
No.
The black metal?
Black metal, excuse me. So, you're just moving one sentence, Courtney, yes? Yeah, all right, great, okay. And we have that as met. Relationship of the proposed building to the environment, now we're gonna talk about our pitch and our colors.
So, basically, if it's not five twelve, let me understand this, he has to ask for a waiver because our building code says five.
We may request.
Request.
Five twelve, sir.
So, you need to specify if you do or don't request it and what you do or don't request it on. You don't have to have five twelve, you can request five twelve.
I'm going to make a motion to move this along, that we request five twelve pitch on the front to buildings parallel to Route two.
Second it.
Okay, and all in favor, raise your hand, please. All opposed?
And that's just building one and two.
Correct.
We have a number on the site.
Yes.
So, I can link one building to it.
Correct. Now, on the colors.
So, so we're, we're okay leaving the rest?
Yes, because we've heard.
At the half twelve?
Yeah. We're only imposing that on the front two.
And is, is there, there's no drawing showing the slope pitch of the back two?
Back two applies to dumbness or.
It's the same pitch, it's just a mono pitch in one direction.
Oh, check.
To the back.
Okay, so that's still a half twelve?
Yep.
Okay, now the color issue. We've all, we know that the proposal is green roof, green doors, which I don't think anyone has expressed any concern about. And the color of the body, building body, there has been some discussion about wanting a darker brown, similar to the Sunday River location. So, is anyone prepared to make a motion?
Are you familiar with that?
Yeah.
It's, I mean, it's, it's a natural wood building.
Well, comparable in that.
It's actually got a wide hitch, so.
Yeah, yeah, so, but comparable wood tone.
So, just a darker brown for the siding.
Can I add something, though? I'm just trying to think of the house to the left. Its colors.
It's dark brown.
It's a darker brown.
It's set quite a bit back.
What do you mean, the Bethel Beverage?
No, 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 that's mid hat.
They repainted that, what is that?
It's dark brown.
It's a, it's a darker.
Trying to be gorgy brown, I think.
Yeah, it's almost kind of a dark brown.
I just felt like it was almost a darker shade of this.
Yes, it is.
That they could kind of match up to, maybe.
So, we will just change the word tan, sand color to?
To a dark brown.
Dark brown, you're agreeing to that, dark brown, okay. And we have that as met. Does anyone wanna vote on that or are you comfortable? Okay, now we're on parking, met, we'll have.
Hold on, are we not voting on that one?
The red book is pretty clean. Park, project will have off-street parking, but we've said somewhere else that there's no vehicles left on site. So, is that the right way to say that?
Permanent parking, but I mean, they are gonna have to stop to get their things out.
Yes, so, is there a better way to say that? Project will only have intermittent parking or something, you know what I mean? I know you have to park to get your things out of, it just seems odd.
It's not only parking, in the sense of parking.
Right. Okay, and then joint use, met, this is only, parking for use is only for this establishment. We have met in terms of compliance, no existing building on site. Special features, met, no exposed storage or machinery, exterior lighting. All lighting will be a shine-down style that does not produce glare from budding landowners or vehicles. And we have a scene, we have a picture of what the lighting looks like. And the lighting plan is.
You're looking right, one of them right there. One of those is the lighting, it's got lighting on.
And then the picture with Deborah, I just, it's right here, sorry, Jim.
But we have a lighting plan.
Okay, yes.
Just a shoebox down there.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we are okay with that. We're moving on to page nine. There should be lighting in all parking areas and walkways, et cetera. There will be a lighting mounted on the buildings. They will approximately be nine to ten feet high and approximately thirty feet apart. They are an LED shoebox style fixture and downcast, so that's okay. State Fire Marshal's met, the project doesn't need state fire marshal approval. Noise, met, will not create noise levels large enough to affect a budding prop, budding landowners. The next standard is NA, does not qualify for exemption on sound, odors, met, not creating odors. Fire chief, met, project meets all the standards. We have a letter dated. Waivers granted, none. Conditions of approval, these are our standard conditions of approval, folks. So, with these amendments and additions, is somebody prepared to make a motion to approve the findings of that?
Make a motion to approve the findings of that?
Is there a second? Who seconded, all those in favor? Okay, I think we're unanimous on that. And is somebody prepared to make a motion to approve the actual site plan?
To make that motion?
Who makes a motion? Do we have a second, Pete seconds? And all in favor?
Do you have the orange copies this one?
Yeah, we.
I did not, I didn't know.
Can we lose one of these small scale ones, too?
He's fine with it, I'm fine with it.
So, let's just figure out which one.
Can we actually just like sign this, the present?
The whole packet?
Or do you want the?
The whole packet? Yeah, let's do that.
Or, yeah, you could do the small site plan, I don't really care.
I have a colored one.
Oh, there. You wanna, you wanna sign a colored one?
Sure. Yeah, that's fine. But how is Courtney getting her copy of that?
I don't need a copy, it doesn't go to the registry of the finding. I can take a picture of it.
Or we can sign one smaller, the golden one.
Okay, let's do that, let's sign.
They can give you the big one if you want to sign both. Or if you don't need a signed copy, please just sign the little one down.
I'm not doing the finding of that.
Yeah.
This page three. That's it, right? All right, I'm going to. And today is two. Nine four, going this way, you have your pen. Thank you for your patience with us, we've been very easily to deal with.
You guys listening, it was nice to be able to just kind of talk through these items, appreciate it.
Just one, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure where we're gonna start, I order the building, it'll take a while to.
I'm not coming out of the cargo ship from, are they?
Uh, uh, yeah, I don't know.
So, they used to live with the whole building?
Yeah.
Oh, T S.
Just don't want to see you run into an issue in two years.
Oh, yeah, in two years, okay.
It's only okay for two years.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, he doesn't need anything, he's all set. I'm gonna have to send him off.
Okay.
Yeah, there's probably like a five one we've done.
All right, is there any other business before this board? Next meeting is February twenty eighth.
As of right now, I don't have anything.
When's the deadline for making that settlement?
Today, so I would say not, yeah.
I'll make a motion when you adjourn.
All in favor? No, we're all just gonna get our jammies. You're beaten, you sandwiched up orange.
I don't read my figure for that again.
I wonder what, somebody's gonna have to look at that.
I just don't know how to work it, I guess.
Thank you all for putting up.
End.